Do we have the official start?
We'll call the December 7th meeting to order at 6:30.
Do you need this one or is it tied into here or?
Yeah, this one you can tell the people join soon.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what happens when Peter's not here. No, just blaming him for something.
Yeah, he'll be here by the time we get started.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead and see.
Just in the test.
Test.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Back to the beginning.
All right, well, looks like the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
No.
I think a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have in swearing in of Commissioner Sarah Van Aston.
Sir, if you could stand, please. Just raise your right hand.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir Van Aston.
Sarah Van Aston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the city of Dayton.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office for the city of Dayton.
As a planning commission member.
As a planning commission member.
In the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
In the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
According to law and the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law and the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Item 3B, election of the vice chair.
Like to nominate Darren be vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just started, I don't know.
I'm okay with it.
Good.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Entertain a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The only thing we have tonight is the planning commission minutes from November 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes noting that the first part is wrong with it. Should say Ryan Maltzen opened the meeting versus Peter.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes five zero. Next item is open forum. Is there anyone here for non-agenda items? You'll be given three minutes for non-agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I should say another's one or more people in the audience that's here to discuss the master plan open house. And so that's a discussion item at the very end. But to be clear, it's just a discussion item, we don't have a formal presentation.
Formal presentation, okay. I guess with that, we can hold those until, those comments until then, so. Item six would be council update.
Okay, so for the 14th. So we had a recognition for Sharon Vogel. She won the state fire chief's public educator of the year. And then there was a fire study presentation. It was a very preliminary presentation. The bulk of the informational is where the, where the stations could end up and what that would do to response time. Then we had the budget, where we zeroed in a little better on the budget. There's a lot of details on that, but we ended up with finding out that the county had kind of messed up our capacity, which was going to affect the rate. So we had staff go back and look at the, and to lock that rate down to what it was last year. And then we had the third quarter report, which had nothing surprising in it. It's just basically a presentation of where the funds were. Fire department and the, I believe the police department are now sharing a boat. Or at least we, we approved them going out to get the boat. We also had a discussion on replacing, this gets complicated. Our current fire station tanker is leaking and it's, it's looked at as shot. Apparently the steel tank they believe is corroded inside. So what they're doing is they're going to buy a used tank. Though it's a stainless steel tank, so it's in good shape. And then we're looking at purchasing a tanker-engine combination. We approved that. That's going to take a while to not only get spooled up to get built, but we'll start making payments on it right away. And then there was a, oh, an approval to get an engineering design for territorial. That was really to get something started, not for where territorial and 81 come together, but where that development would access territorial. Basically around about in that area. And again, was that it, Jason, that was the bulk of it?
It was both combined, so it was both intersections and how they interact.
Okay. So it was the 14th, 28th, 28th was, oh yeah, tobacco and cannabis ordinance. We basically decided to treat cannabis as alcohol. So wherever that would need a permit, the cannabis would need a, I didn't even know if you can get a permit yet, but that's where that ended up, that we would essentially treat them the same. We did pass a commission attendance, so that means any member that misses three meetings a year will be automatically removed. We approved the Levy Street purchase agreement. And we approved going out for bids on the three generators for the, see, City Hall Activity Center, well, number two, I believe. So those are out for bids. Those will be permanent generators. And then the budget was kind of finalized, so we did get the tax rate back to where it was last year. There was a few adjustments. And then we discussed the tax forfeit land on the interchange. Staff had brought some numbers forward to see if it made any sense. This was for a training facility on the interchange that, that, I think it's 10 acres or nine acres, something like that. So it was just a discussion about that. We ended up having them tighten the financial numbers up a little bit. There was some holes in the numbers. That was it.
When you say training facility, I guess, like for?
Fire training. Apparently they need a yearly training or something and.
We'd be building a facility?
We would be building a facility.
My understanding, just overhearing discussions, it sounds like this is something that would actually generate some revenue as well from other fire departments.
The thinking would be we would, we would rent it out and hopefully get some money back out of it. The problem is I seen it is it didn't factor in the cost of the building, so, which would swamp that. But I don't know, there was other numbers not tied into that. I think they were, they underestimated the amount that they could get for rental. There was a few problems, so they were going to clean it up and bring it back.
Seems like a good corner to put a training facility on. Or, meaning that.
I guess I would consider as the council that, or even the planning commission, is that, is that really the use we want on that corner too?
Right now, it's guided commercial, I mean, you know where it's at, right?
Yep. Right, yeah, it's the prime, it's the corner with good access, where the other corner that we approved the industrial on didn't have good access.
Right, yes. Yep.
It's just, one of the caveats with that is it's tax forfeiture property. If we use it for a public use, it's free land for the city. If we locate somewhere else, we're buying that property, or wherever we go.
Yeah, the future tax revenue is the thing to look at too, though.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, there was another, when we sold the Levy Street property, that kind of brought something to a head, and that is the state statute regarding municipalities profiting off of tax forfeit properties. And it seems like there's a big gray area as to how that's interpreted, so. So that'll come into play also. And as of right now, I believe Hennepin County isn't selling any tax forfeit properties due to the Supreme Court ruling on that, so. It may be all moot point for a while.
Just a thought, and obviously you don't have to have an answer, right? But if we were to use that property for a while and then sell it, there's no issue there.
Yeah.
According to the.
There is, up to 30 years.
30 years. 30 years.
I thought it was 10.
It has to be quite a while then.
It's, yeah, it's.
All right.
Well, apparently we've already technically owned it. Well, we did some meta-use for it almost 10 years ago, so we have 10 years burned down, but.
Okay.
Yeah, and I thought it was 10 years, but it turns out that Amy, our lawyer, checked into it and she said it's 30, so. But again, I think the other issue is, is this question of what does it mean to make a profit, so.
That former use, that was the parking ride, right?
Yes. And clearly you don't have to prove.
There's not as much demand for parking rides anymore.
Well, plus, it's still, you know, weeds, so, I don't.
Any other questions for staff? Or any counsel? I keep forgetting, John, we should, we should add a staff update here, just if there's anything. Anything staff should add? Anything the EDA is working on or that we should be aware of?
I, I'm going to say the EDA has, the last EDA meeting, a couple of requests for our staff to look into. As one was the possibility of railroad spur along 81. And then the second was to look at the sign ordinance, so that, not related to what we're talking about with the sign amendment tonight, but redoing some of the other items within the sign ordinance. So I'll kind of wait until we get there to see what other questions the commission may have on signs.
Is there a user driving the rail spur request?
There is not.
Without a user, I'm just saying, that's how the rail state world works, is don't spend too much time and money on it.
Be the city that's putting the spur in.
For?
An unknown user.
Okay.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item seven, public hearings. The first one is resolution granting CUP for construction of an accessory building.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is for a CUP for an accessory building, and I believe the applicants are here. Bradley Wolkness at 13-800 Balsam Lane North has applied for a CUP for an accessory building that exceeds the maximum allowable square footage per parcel then permitted by Wright. His property is 2.3 acres, almost 100,090 square feet. It is Zoned R2 residential. And in our code, accessory building provisions outline what can be approved administratively and a process to approve accessory buildings that exceed the maximum allowable combined size for buildings with the CUP. Sorry, I can move this down a little bit. This is for residential districts above one acre in size, which theirs is. You can see on the chart here under R2, maximum allowable square footage for between two and three acres is 2,000 square feet, and the maximum number of accessory buildings is three. Also, in residential districts above one acre in size cannot be placed in the front yard, cannot exceed the height of the principal structure, and all accessory buildings with the exception of attached garages shall be included when calculating the maximum square footage of accessory building space allowable on a property. The construction, the proposed by the applicant is construction of a detached accessory building, a two-stall garage approximately 30 feet by 42 feet, which is about 1,260 square feet. The applicant does have an existing detached accessory building on the property that is 30.4 feet by 40.6, or 1,234.24 square feet. And again, the maximum allowable combined square footage for an R2 with over two acres is 2,000 square feet. So he exceeds that by 494.24 feet. The applicant has stated that the use will be for storage of vehicles and items consistent with the residential neighborhood and the existing attached garage to be remodeled in the future to allow for a handicap accessible bedroom and bathroom for a disabled relative. Here you can see an overview of the property. To the southeast is the existing accessory building, and to the northeast is the proposed accessory building. Our code does state that it cannot be in front of the house, however, unless it is more than 150 feet setback, which the applicant meets that. So where he's proposing to put it does meet the city code. Here's a street view of the property. There are several trees for screening on the property. The applicant did have to take some down to put up the pad for the new accessory building. However, there are, all along the adjoining property, there are several full-grown trees that are in that area. So if the commission wants him to add back any trees, I believe the applicant said he'd be willing to do that. Here's a picture of the existing house, and then the proposed detached accessory building, which would have the two-car garage in there, so it would be for parking of his cars and for storage. Our code does require that there are two parking spaces for each single-family home. And should the commission recommend approval, staff would recommend the following conditions. Building permit for the detached garage shall be reviewed and approved prior to construction. The applicant has already submitted a permit for that. The detached garage shall only be used for storage of personal property accessory to the residential use of the home. The detached garage shall not be used as a dwelling. The detached garage shall not be utilized for all or a portion of a home occupation for commercial activities or for commercial storage. The detached garage shall be limited to the proposed 1,260 square feet in size. Any additional requirements required by the building department would be added. The detached garage shall be complementary in design to the principal building to be approved by city staff at the time of building permit. An annual CUP inspection must be scheduled with the zoning administrator or his or her designee on or before December 1st of each year. And then the applicant must record the CUP resolution with Hennepin County and provide the city with a receipt showing that it's been recorded within 30 days of being signed. And I'll kind of stop right there. If there's any questions for staff, otherwise the applicant is here in the audience.
Can you go back to the table that you had?
Sure.
That showed the districts.
Back here. Right here?
Yes.
Here's the size down in the bottom. 87,000, that's square feet, and then the acres.
For the lot size.
Correct.
The building size limit of 1,200 square feet, how, is that only under R1?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So I was just a little bit confused because the building size limit, the wordage, goes from R1 all the way to R-E, so, okay, good. I was afraid that potentially the building itself also needs a CUP revariance since it's over 1,200, but.
No.
Since that only applies to R1, that wouldn't be the case.
Yep. There are a few more tiers after this, I just didn't include them. It does go up to, you're allowed 4,000 maximum square feet and five accessory buildings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
The 2,000 square foot limit is an aggregate of all accessory buildings?
It is a combined total. In 2018 to 2022, I believe, this was inadvertently left off. So in 2022, this was amended.
2022, is that when we redid the whole code on accessory buildings too?
Yes. Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff at this moment? Would the applicant like to come forward? State your name and address.
Brad Wolkness, I'm 13-800 Balsam Lane North.
Thank you. Any, anything you'd like to share with us that either hasn't been shared or maybe persuaded?
Well, there's probably a lot. We kind of got stuck, she mentioned that timeline where it was left off. And what, so what happened for us is, so we have a four-level split that has no bathrooms on the main floor. So the only ba, we have a master bathroom on the top floor, and we have a small bathroom on the lower level. So what we wanted to do was somehow add on to the house to get a main level bathroom, and also to, we also, right now, we're a four-bedroom considered, but you can barely get beds in two of the rooms. So the goal is to get, put, you know, take the, take the walls out, make it into more living room type space in the main house, and then use the existing garage to add in another bedroom, well, actually, two bedrooms to keep it to a four-bedroom, and then a ba, a main bathroom. And the problem we had is we talked to, I talked to three different contractors and an architect, and because of how close the house is to the back of the property, and it's a four-level split, none of them could come up with a way to add on to the house. So, especially to the main level to help with the bathroom. So the best idea was the contractor we're working with now, he just said, hey, why don't we build a decent-sized garage to actually match a modern house, modern family, and then use the garage space? So that's what we decided to do. We went forward with it, started to do, we went through all of the city processes to get it done. And we had a bit of a mix-up where, when, I don't know what you call the person who takes care of it, but through the company that you guys use or whatever, I was working with him, really nice guy, and we, we basically, you know, just laid the whole thing out, went through all the Ps and Qs that he asked, and, because we thought at first, he told us we would need two variances, and then, I think it was right at the time when the city lost a couple of those people, so there was only one. I didn't know that. But he went back and looked again, and came back the next week and let me know, like, actually, we only need one variance, and we need the variance just because it's in front. And now I understand better because it's because that, he must have looked at it when that part was missing, about the size limit. So he came back and told me, like, oh, you only need one variance, you just need the variance for being in front. So then we started, so I paid for that one, got ready, and the week before coming to this meeting for that, he contacted me again and said, oh, I made a mistake, that's, that, or not that he made a mistake, that it had changed, the rules had changed because of our long lot size, that we didn't need a variance for being in front anymore. So, so we, we went ahead then, because the goal was to get that garage done this year before winter, and then work through the winter to get the house ready for an elderly relative if we needed it. And obviously, it didn't happen because we, we spent a bunch of money getting trees removed and getting the ground prepared, and then found out when we, when my contract, we thought we were all good to go. So when my contractor went to do the permit, we found out, like, oh, we're not good to go. There was a mistake. So I've already invested about 20 grand in the project, thinking we had the go-ahead. And so I'm kind of in a rock and a hard place right now. And for that kind of a house, like, to build, you know, what's allowed, doesn't really allow us to update anything. You know, we end up with about the same kind of parking, but now it's, instead of being part of the house, it's separate, which almost brings the value down, you know? And then we don't have enough parking for, if we have, you know, three cars, we don't have enough parking. So that's, that's what we were hoping we could, we could get it done. Any questions?
Just to clarify, but the existing.
Just to clarify, but the existing attached garage is two stalls, correct?
It's what, two stalls, two stalls. Yep. You got it.
Throughout your process that you had gone through and you thought you had these, you know, you were clear to go ahead, had, did you already order some of the building materials? Is that?
No, no, because we, because we hadn't got the permit yet.
Okay.
We were, and we, the, um, we were just getting it ready because, you know, it's hard to get people out and that. And so we started with the trees, got that all cleared out. And then, uh, and then, yeah, went on to try to get it done before winter. We just, you know, a little while ago, finished the, the ground set up because we just basically had holes.
Was your contractor the one communicating with the city the whole time?
No, it was me.
You?
Me, yep, the whole time. He was in on the one meeting we had, he was on the phone while I talked with the city guy. And, yeah.
Did you ask the city early on about the size of the structure and present it?
Yeah, that's why we thought.
And what was the feedback from the city?
Well, that was, he said right away, the first thing he said, we need two variances. We need for being in front and for the size.
And for the size.
Yep. And so that's why I said, well, let's just go through that process first and see because we probably, you know, at that point, we were like, well, we probably won't build unless we can get, you know, a decent enough sized garage to put vehicles in, you know? Why build something and have vehicles sitting out in the yard? And, uh, um, yeah, that's when we started the process, went through the whole variant. We're, we're starting through the variance process, got all our information in and everything. And then it was just, there was, you know, apparently a mix up. So that's when we, you know, when we were told we were good to go, you know?
Your con, I guess, I just want, because I think it'll factor in a little bit, um, my thought process, maybe others. I just want to make sure, like, so the contractor said you were good to go?
No.
The city said you were?
City guy.
That you didn't need any variances?
Yeah, the guy from land form.
The size?
Said, said we were good to go, we didn't need any more of it. We need any variance.
So they said size and front yard originally?
Yep.
And then they got rid of front yard?
So.
I guess I'm trying to figure out when the size went away.
Oh, sure. The size went away the last thing. The last thing that went away was the size. He, he at first said, um, that we don't need, oh, no, I'm sorry. Though the first thing that went away was the size. Because he said, oh, I, I re-looked at it again. He's like, I must have been looking at the wrong year or something because I looked at it again and, um, the size is fine. So that came back pretty quickly after we started the variance process. So we were like, oh, well, because we, I hadn't paid for, you know, both variances, um, yet. And so it worked out. I was like, well, we'll just pay for one and get that started then and see how far it goes before we do anything. And then, uh, yeah, about a week before the meeting that I was supposed to come to for this, um, he contacted and said, oh, yeah, you know, that, that being in front changed. So you don't need that variance anymore. So at that point, we're like, well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna start prepping and getting it ready and then, uh, and then pulled the permits, you know? And when we pulled the permits, then we found out like, oh, I guess we're not good to go.
Just to add a little bit of clarity, so I believe the conversation started about three staff members ago.
Well, no, actually, that's what was confusing is, um, I think what happened is I sent it in and it sounds, from what I understanding to, I only talked with one land form guy. But if my understanding, what I understood ta, talking to him was, um, when I sent it in, somebody else started it. And then he got it. And I think that was it. I mean, it sounds like he was pretty overwhelmed.
Sure.
You know? So.
So I, just for some clarity, so I think this started out as a variance to the front yard setback and then we found a, uh, another section in the code that's, there's an exception where you can have a garage in the front yard if it's a, if the setback exceeds 150 feet, which this clearly does. Um, and then, you know, I'm not sure about the second variance, but the, the current application is a conditional use permit for accessory buildings exceeding 2,000 square feet total.
And I don't know if it makes a difference or not because it, we're listed as, what is it, 2.3 acres, I think? And, uh, but we actually care for probably over three. I've never had it, you know, checked out because we're on the edge of Champlin. So our back, of the back of our har, house, we care for at least over a half acre, if not close to an acre of Champlin.
It's just the property that you own.
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. You're maintaining Champlin's.
Yeah, that's a hit against you here.
Yeah. I haven't got paid yet, so.
Yeah. Good luck. What's, what's the use of your current existing accessory building?
Um, just kind of storage. It's just a dirt floor.
Okay.
Um, so, and, and I actually thought about trying to convert that, but it's quite a ways from the house. So it's a hike, you know, over to it. And then it, the way it, when it was put in, the ground slopes down towards it a bit. So if, if the, if it freezes and then, and then dri, uh, warms up a bit, it gets to be a slush mess in front of it. So if I, to convert that, I would have to put in a new, um, basically gravel driveway to try to take care of that. And I'm not sure how well that would. I haven't talked to anybody about that. Um, but it'd be, you know, a big cost for me to try to convert that, you know, because I have to put a floor in and do all that too. Because I thought about that. It's just to do all that and have it that far from the house, I don't think my wife would be too thrilled walking over to that thing in the winter. Yeah.
He testified to that.
Yeah, I don't think the neighbors would want me to put a covered walkway over to that. Yeah. Yeah.
Did your contractors ever explore an attached garage to the building? Maybe angle it because obviously I can see the topography is changing?
Yeah, it's very deep. Yeah. And the problem we had there was, um, like, like, so our neighbor's house is set back further than ours. And so to, to the side. And so, um, if we put the, the, a decent size attached on that side, we'd be, I mean, bucking up right close to their house. And I know, like, legally, we could have done that. But it was just seemed like, well, you know, I don't think they would appreciate that. And, you know, because for us, it wouldn't matter because it'd be garage. But it'd be right up against their, you know, close to their, you know, house. They have like a, a nice, um, kind of sun porch there that would be, would have been right where the, they would be looking right at our garage. Because we would have had to take out almost all of the trees right up there. We're right now, it's a little bit more away from their house and there's a tree line still in between. And we could probably add to that if we need to do.
This is an interesting one because it's an accessory building, but it's being used for a primary purpose, right? Because you're substituting your primary garage for this building in order to remodel your home to make it more functional.
Exactly.
Right? So it's an interesting one where it's not, you're not building this just to have more space, you're like more garage space and, I mean, you're building this to get more living space.
Yeah, yeah. Because if, if we wanted just more garage space, we would, we would have just added on to the current garage.
Yeah.
Because that wouldn't have been bad because we could have easily added, you know, another garage stall or two. But try to add to the, yeah, we, we really just, the only way we could figure out was to use the current garage to make living space. Yeah.
I think what I'm having a hard time, um, understanding, and maybe you can help me out, you've got a two stall garage now. Um, and I understand you're going to use that two stall garage, uh, for living space now. So you need to find room to park two cars or more. It sounds like you may want more.
Yeah.
Have you considered trying to work within the 2,000 square foot limit? Because that would, that would be a 740 square foot secondary building, proposed accessory building out there, which exceeds a three stall garage size in a lot of the new developments that are being built right now, mine included.
I, yeah, I don't know. I never got that kind of an alternative from any of the people I talked to as, yeah, being enough space to get, to actually really get three cars in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get that as.
This, the same thought went through my brain because you would easily have a two car plus garage with storage or a three car tight, meaning.
Yeah.
Don't count on putting storage next to the wall after you park it.
Yeah.
But there is that second, or that other structure.
Yeah.
Storage too, was, was my thought there. Uh, because I, I struggle with storage myself, but.
Yeah.
I also don't have another, um, place to store.
Yeah. I guess part of my, yeah, I guess part of my frustration with this is, you know, I spent, you know, money for that size and I spent money on the plans and all that, you know, while, when I thought I had a, and good to go.
Right, you selected that size.
Yeah.
Prior.
Yeah. If I would have known something different, well, then we would have been trying to think outside the box more, you know? So, yeah.
Question for staff, has this code been updated on the website yet? Because I know we've had issues with some of the code changes.
This is on the website.
This one is updated?
Yep.
Has it been there for a while?
Um, since I've been here, so since May.
Okay.
Yeah, and our, the guy who did my plans, or not the survey, the guy, because I paid for the survey and everything already, obviously, um, the guy who did the survey, he actually alerted us that it might be too big. And so that's why we were, you know, but that was when we first started working with the guy and then we were, you know, we were told it was okay, you know? So we just thought that was, you know, guy that works with a lot of cities just made a mistake.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Thanks. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at 7:11. Um, if there's anyone who'd like to come forward on this item. If not, I think we can open our discussion as well. I'll start, I, you know, I'm, I understand that we don't want to have a certain amount of size within accessory buildings, to Paul's point. You know, if we, if we get the existing garage, um, the existing attached garage converted, I'm okay with this. Um, I'm okay with the four car garage. Um, I didn't ask, I should have. Um, I'm going to assume that since the other accessory garage, detached garage shed is older and not maybe in the best shape and maybe would one day come down, um, just knowing deterioration of, of some of these, I mean, the house, it looks like somewhere in the seventies, late sev, mid seventies, early eighties built. So that, that other garage is getting up there in age too. Um, and so I'm okay with it, um, from the standpoint of the existing garage being converted.
Are you maybe suggesting that we should attach a condition? Because I, from what I heard is the garage is likely going to be converted. Um, but if something happened, all of a sudden the garage doesn't get converted.
Yeah, I would, I would entertain a, a condition of, you know, if the existing garage isn't converted upon sale of the property, the, maybe the existing detached would have to go away. Something along those lines. There was a property up on, uh, 121st that, yeah, that they had built, uh, they had a nice, um, stable.
That was before we changed the?
Before we changed it, but they had, they had a, a condition to tear down the one before they sold the property. And I could see something like that working here. Um, is, is kind of where the, where my, my head's at. I don't mind, you know, I don't mind the, uh, the larger garage detached. It seems to fit the property as well off our view shed from Public Road.
I think for me, if not for the trouble that the applicant had in determining what they can or cannot do, um, I would have advocated for shrinking the size of this building to fit within, um, our, our code, primarily because of one of the recommended conditions. I assume that's, uh, a recommended condition that we always use, that they need to apply to have an inspection done. As we get bigger and bigger.
Correct.
And grant more and more CUPs, the burden that this places on staff, I think, can become significant. So I think as a planning commi, commission, it's important for us to consider that, that although, you know, the burden isn't as much as a variance would be here, it's, you know, a burden of proof for us to actually approve one of these things. There is still a burden that would be placed on staff. And I think if not for the trouble that they had and already had gone down the road of designing it at this size and the rework and the additional costs that it would require to undo that, I'd probably advocate for it to be smaller. But since that did occur, I think I, I agree with you, Peter.
Yeah, I mean, every lot is different, Dayton. It's one of the beautiful things about this city, right? And this is a very unique lot. Um, your property line is not straight. Um, and I, yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know, like, you put a trowel between the two buildings and all of a sudden it's, you know, attached? Like, what, what is the definition of attached, right? Like, I mean, I, I think the fact that it's a primary use garage, um, makes it okay with me. I'm, I don't have concern about the going larger because of that. Um, and if you're going to build a garage, build it so it's useful. Um, everybody wishes their garage was bigger, so, um, I think it's a respectful size, it's four stalls, but it's, it's not like extras, like, it's only extra three and a half feet on each side of the cars, right? It's not like there's an extra 10 feet in each traction or something, right?
And it's only 10 feet deeper than what's being standard built, not, not twice as deep.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Or I shouldn't say standard, what's, what the production builders are building.
Yeah. So I guess in this case.
Just so you guys know too, when we did that, the square footage maximums, it was not based on.
It's right.
Anything.
Arbitrary.
I mean, it was just kind of a.
I would say that it was very subjective, but I'd also say we increased everything. So.
Yes.
The 40, or I shouldn't say 40 because I wasn't here, but at least the 20 years before this.
It was half that.
There was no chance of even doing this.
It was half that. And we just said, you know, this is ridiculous, we, we doubled it, but.
Yeah, we added.
We could easily limit it to 2,500, but, but we didn't. It is what it is, so.
Yeah.
I, I think that's my biggest concern is that it is going above and beyond with the staff burden and, you know, is this going to open the door for more CUPs for larger garages? And so to me, that's why I did really want to understand how you got to where you were today and if someone messed up on staff, it is what it is. But we're not real sure if that's, well, given all the staff turnover, it's hard to really put all the pieces together, I'll just say that.
Is it a requirement for CUPs to be inspected every year or is that just a recommendation?
It's, I don't believe it's a, a requirement. I know a lot of cities do that if they have enough staff. And, um, I know talking to Zach, that was one thing that we wanted to start doing and implementing that these things get IUPs and CUPs.
Do all type of CUPs need to be inspected though? I guess is the question. Like, can we say like, a CUP for outdoor storage needs to be inspected because it can potentially lead to more problems than.
It's like risk factor, right?
Something like this.
Correct.
This one doesn't scream risk factor to me.
Now, when did we start doing that?
Pardon me?
When, when did this?
Zach, now that we're full staff, we talked about starting to inspect IUPs and CUPs on an annual basis. For, just to make sure they're in conformance with what was approved. But something like this, yes, I can see not having to do it.
So I'm going to say from, uh, you know, past work experience in other communities where, uh, you know, previous community where we had over 200 CUPs over, you know, 20, 30, 40 years, um, the uses change over time and based on new ownership. And so the idea is, you know, you look back at a CUP that might have been issued in 1980, um, is it still being used as it was issue, as it was intended in 1980 or has it changed completely, uh, from what was intended where the CUP is no longer valid? I just want to clarify my comment. I'm not taking issue with that recommended condition at all. Working in other communities, um, I, I can, I can understand that aspect of it. I just think it's important for us to know as a planning commission that the decision we make does result or could result in additional workforce staff. Um, and, and that's more of a general comment for all CUPs that we may see with, with this type of condition. I personally would be in favor of it if staff feels like they need to keep track of these CUPs. Um, and if, if, you know, I'm sure council can, can direct otherwise, but I think it's a reasonable condition to include. We just take it into account. I think it's, it's smart to take into account and we consider them.
Is there an option between annual and never? Like, is there, like, because, could we do certain ones that are like every five years? Like, some, the high risk ones are every year, the lower risk ones are maybe every five years?
From a practical standpoint, if, if we have a reason that it needs to be inspected, we're, like, we're going to go out and inspect it, whether it's a requirement or not.
Okay.
Yep.
Because.
That's kind of how we treat our innocence laws too.
Right.
Waiting for a complaint.
Correct.
And it, it seems like, yeah.
And if I recall correctly, and Peter and Paul, you were with me.
If I recall correctly, and Peter and Paul, you were with me, so... But when we did this zoning code, the reason we added the CUP was partially for height and partially for size, because we recognized some of the subjectivity and there could be unique lots. And, you know, the challenge I'm having with this one is I don't see the hardship, other than for the home concept of making your home bigger, because you're going from a two-car garage to a four-car garage. And that's why it'd be, if you could just attach it, that'd be better, but it's not right or wrong, it's more this is our code and I just want to avoid having discussions like this on a regular basis. Like if, if we're too low, we need to go higher. I don't want to be doing CUPs all the time for this, I guess is where I'm coming from. And, you know, it's about, you know, I'd be better if it was a three-car garage, so a little bit smaller and it was only exceeding it by like five, ten percent, because it's exceeding it by about twenty-five percent now. I guess that's where I'm at.
I would, even though the applicant or the, the city didn't state, state it, I would actually argue that there is a little bit of a hardship here with the unique shape of the lots. From this, from that standpoint.
Yeah, I actually think a four-car garage has no harm on the site or the neighboring property, it's more the code, so I don't think there's the hardship from that standpoint. You could probably put a five-car garage on it, you know, and it wouldn't hurt anything.
I'm, I'm just saying from the shape of the lot, if we were to, to draw up lots again in this area, would we really put in these odd shaped lots?
Maybe at two point three acres.
Or put the house so far back that you can...
Oh, yeah, or put the house that far back again. I mean, there's a lot of little unique things in these older areas that we have to consider as well.
Yep.
I think, I think the other part of the hardship that we've, we recognize might be the staff turnover.
But that is a definite potential hardship.
And, at some point, I mean, we, we realize that with John, just starting this year and, and Tori as well, that, like, it is relatively recent and you look at their, you know, it takes time to get this, this stuff put together from a resident standpoint. I didn't look to check on dates on here, but the, yeah, the date on here is July of, for the survey. And that's, that's just when he, when he signed it, he was probably out there a couple months before that. And so just having known, knowing we have had staff turnover, to me, that, that also would classify as one.
I don't know to what extent we even need a hardship here, right, with the CUP?
I'm more thinking of a logical reason of why, you know, if we start seeing ten CUPs, the bigger garages, I mean, where do we draw the threshold? That's, you know, that's what I'm going through my brain if I'm gonna make an exception.
Makes sense.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion at this point?
I would.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
I will close the public hearing.
Before someone makes a motion, I will add that my vote will be swayed by that condition about, that Peter had mentioned that I brought up about the living quarters, if it's not gone, when I'd maybe even put a three or five-year timeframe on it. If it's not gone, the other building needs to come, something needs to be done to put it back, because that's really why we're considering this too.
Would it?
So we don't end up with a two-car, four-car, and a shed. It doesn't sound like that's the plan, but...
Sorry, I'm gonna ask, when, when the motion is made, that you clarify what, what the condition is that's being added or removed.
Fair. Would, from that standpoint, just, I, I know this is a CUP, but would it be better to be an IUP?
Don't look at me.
So with IUPs, the intent is that it's a temporary use that goes away either at, at a certain date or a certain event that goes, that happens. And so, just to throw it out there, so let's say, the garage is being converted into, we'll say, temporary use for a person that, that's going to live there for, you know, maybe it's a hundred years, whatever it is. And then the garage would be converted, the lit, the garage would be converted back to a garage. It's difficult to enforce.
Which is not what we want to happen, because we don't want the garage, or if I understand you correctly.
Yeah, I just, if, I want it just to be a proven accessory building, approve one, because everyone, everyone would want one if they could.
No, I think, I think we're, I think we're, I, the reason I'm proposing the IUP is, we don't care if this were to come up without the existing accessory building, would we even be here talking?
No.
No.
And so the IUP would be tied not to the existing attached garage, it would be tied to the existing building?
The existing detached garage.
The existing detached. And so...
Seems a CUP, Peter, would be better only because it's tied to the property, not a building? Follow me? Meaning that...
The IUP is tied to the property as well.
Right.
And so what, what I'm proposing is we have an IUP for the property, so that upon sale of the property, they have to remove the existing detached garage that's down the hill, the shed.
Assuming the garage.
Assuming the attached garage becomes a garage.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, because they still allow...
You're saying remove it period?
Because it wouldn't matter.
Because they're still allowed this larger one if they don't have the smaller one. And, and it's only upon sale so that these guys can do with their project, they can live in it the way they're living in it, and then upon sale, they have to, have to deal with it.
I don't know if it matters whether we call it a CUP or IUP, but it's an interesting concept.
We're not gonna notice that when it goes up for sale. So it'd be, it'd be very difficult to enforce, so, you know, let's say the sale goes through, a newer moves in, didn't realize that the IUP existed. It would then be upon the city to enforce the removal of the garage.
Okay. I mean, I'm, on a new owner.
On a new owner.
Honestly, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm fine without this condition on there. I'm, I know there's some up here who, who've expressed, maybe it's, we don't want the size of the accessory structure, so I'm looking for a little bit of a compromise. And that's, that's the only reason I'm throwing these out.
I'm not necessarily against the size, I just want to stick to the code a little bit more.
That's where I, that's where I'm at, that's all my comments, basically, where I'm at.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, if you, if it was an IUP and you had him change it back, you have to consider, he's doing work inside of his house, taking four bedrooms, making them two, to make two other bedrooms. So now if he has to remove it upon sale, he can't market a four-bedroom.
No, no, the detached shed down the hill is the one that I'm talking about removing.
Okay, I thought you said converting the garage back into garage space. Okay.
I'm, I'm looking for, hopefully, what would be the cheapest option as well for the homeowner.
Yeah, and my, the condition I'm suggesting is only about just making sure that the two-car stall garage is executed, because someone could get hit by a bus tomorrow, for all we know, right?
Well, oh, so you don't care about the size of the accessories after it's converted?
No.
Okay.
Once it's done, it's done.
I'm good with that, so maybe a, maybe a five-year would be a, an appropriate?
Three, five years, something like that. I mean, actually, maybe we should ask the applicant if they have concerns about a timeframe, just to make sure that they're okay? If we're gonna do it?
Yeah, I mean, the plan was we were supposed, we were planning on having it done this year. So, because we're on a time crunch, if, you know, because part of the reason we're doing it is for this, you know, her dad. But then we were like, well, we need to help our house out anyway, so let's just move up the plans that we were planning on looking at down the road. So I don't see a problem, I'd be fine with three years. I don't see an issue with that, why that'd be a problem at all, so...
And there's gonna be plumbing in this garage, meaning you're putting a bathroom, if I understood it correctly?
No, oh, you mean, in depth, yeah, the attached garage, we're converting, yeah, definitely.
It's not, it's not gonna be something that someone's gonna probably want to ever convert back to.
No, it'll be a bathroom, two bedrooms, and then like, you know, office, living room space, yeah.
And if it would be converted back, probably would need a permit as well, that was probably a normal permit. So staff would have an opportunity to catch it and say, ooh, technically, you know, you've had a CUP that's been approved on this one. I, yeah, I, I think, I think I have everything I need.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CP application with additional condition that the existing two-car garage gets converted to living space within the three-year timeframe?
Second.
And, and I would suggest that we strike item number eight, yearly inspection.
You're just leaving it basically up to staff?
Yes, if there's an issue or a neighbor complains or something, then staff can inspect. And that is my recommendation.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
If I could just try to clarify the...
You want to read the condition again?
Wordsmith it.
Yes.
Uh, the applicant shall submit permits, no, shall submit permits for conversion of the attached garage into livable area within three years of the date of council approval. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Is it, would it be submit permits or complete construction?
Complete.
Complete construction, okay.
Yeah, so final one. So on, upon, upon final inspection, everything is good.
You're good, okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. We had a motion and a second on the amended resolution, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes five zero, good luck. All right. Next item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Sorry, I'm not used to this yet. At the September twenty-sixth city council meeting, staff received direction to review options to amend the zoning code related to signs placed in the public right-of-way. Staff reviewed the zoning code to make minor edits to subsection six to prohibit all signs within the public right-of-way and to prohibit the placement of contractors' advertising signs to be placed only on a parcel in which they're doing work on. Today's staff went out around the city and took some pictures of off-premise signs. Like in a development, there's signs here, there's advertising for sprinkler blowouts, these would be ones that would not be allowed, because on this parcel, they're not doing that work, what's not a house that's there. The next slide shows going into a development, these are directional signage, these are in the public right-of-way. The directional signage for Daytona Golf Club, that may predate the two thousand nine, I believe it is.
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, when they were allowed, but that is also in the right-of-way. Here's some temporary...
Sign was updated at some point, does that then preclude a grandfathering?
Uh, if, if they don't increase the size, you can make repairs.
So they can add pickleball to it and not be in trouble?
As long as it doesn't increase the size of the sign.
Okay, all right, just checking.
It might be a pickleball in two thousand nine.
And here's some temporary freestanding signs, a lot of the newer developments have these flags. These ones are advertising signs for sales, which the code all does mention in there, there are standards for these. We just kind of wanted to show you all the different kinds of signs that are out there. So staff is proposing the text amendment to have to do a subsection six prohibited signs. The strikes-throughs are what was currently in the code and the underlining is what staff recommends to add. So at the number two, it did say billboards and off-premise signs, just said it like that, except for those established prior to January eighth, two thousand eight. Staff updated the code to have that as added as number thirteen. Any signs that are obsolete and off-premise signs in residential districts, except for those established prior to January eighth.
Can you just shed a little light on obsolete since, what, what you mean by that?
If a business is no longer there and the sign, then that...
In a residential district, though, that's where I'm trying to put it all together.
If, there are some, like they have a, they're, say they do their, their plumbing or their plumbers or something and they have a sign and they're not plumbing anymore, doing that anymore, that business is obsolete.
A, a good example of, of this would probably be some of our newer developments where they've sold all the homes, but they still have their signs.
So it's like the four-lease signs on big industrial buildings that hang there forever as free advertising, same thing?
Right. Yeah, and in residential subdivisions, they can have their for-sale signs and that for thirty-six months or until eighty-five percent of the lots are built on, whichever is less restrictive.
In the right-of-way?
Not in the right-of-way, just as off-premise signs, yep. Nothing can be in the right-of-way.
Nothing can be in the right-of-way.
Correct. But we just, there's a lot of signs out there in the right-of-way that are advertising for construction, like orbs, sprinkler blowouts, different things like that, that we felt that that should be put in the code, that those are not allowed anywhere, even if they're out of the right-of-way, unless that work is taking place in that, at that residential property. And so then we added, any sign within the public right-of-way is prohibited. And this includes installing signs as well as painting, printing, or attaching advertisements on any object within the limits of the public right-of-way. And the, one of the pictures, there was a sign on the telephone pole, or the light pole. The prohibition, the, covers all the unauthorized sign messaging, including but not limited to political and campaign signs, referenda signs, as well as garage sale, real estate, and public social information signs. The unauthorized placement of the signs in the public right-of-way is a misdemeanor.
So the, the origin of this, so this was directed, directed by council, so that we had a council member that asked, could you have, does the city allow for-sale signs or similar signs in the right-of-way? And in looking through the ordinance, it was, I guess by my, our interpretation, no, you can't, but it's easy to, to kind of overlook that. So the intent of this ordinance is to clearly state it's prohibited in the right-of-way. How it's written currently is that, it says that it has to be a setback a minimum of ten feet from the property line. So by interpretation, as a homeowner, like where is my property line? Is it the edge of the street? Is it the middle of the street? I don't know.
Is it ten feet in from the curb in a residential subdivision, because it's right-of-way there? Some areas are like that?
So with this new language that we're proposing, it, it more clearly states that you cannot have it in the right-of-way.
To be clear, it's illegal to be in the right-of-way, period, by Minnesota statutes.
Yes.
Okay. And, I'm not really against any of this, it seems like we might make a few people upset, like garage sale signs, lost pet signs, I could just keep going down the line.
Yeah.
But I guess my bigger thing is, is this even enforceable?
Yes, so the, the way we would enforce it is, is just picking up signs.
But that could be like a once-a-week responsibility, I mean, is, I guess, it could be a lot.
Initially.
What's that?
Initially.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't know all the rules, but even the political signs are, I mean, obviously, if they're on private property, they're fine, but I get it, they're right-of-way, that's, that should be an order, but...
Well, actually, a lot of political signs end up in the right-of-way, but they're in front of a property of it.
I'm a little concerned about the concept of right-of-way too. Meaning, I think in my subdivision, here's my curb, my property line's set back a little bit from the curb. And there could be a lot of mistakes, even knowing how to enforce that, knowing what's in the right-of-way or not, could be a little bit of a challenge.
Sure, yeah, it, and it, we're, I'm putting a lot of weight on the person that enforces that of knowing where the property line is. I mean, just, you know, from a practical experience or perspective, if it's five feet off the right-of-way, chances are, if you're five feet from the pavement, chances are that's in the right-of-way. You know, whether the edge of the right-of-way is, you know, six feet or twenty feet away from the edge of the road, if it's right up against the edge.
I mean, I'm not trying to play too much devil's advocate, I'm just thinking of all the signs I see in my neighborhood that even are supporting athlete, athletes or honor students, they pop their signs in their yard. And they're usually closer to the curb. And I'm just looking at a plat map now, there's a lot of stuff that's in the right-of-way, meaning you're, usually your property line doesn't align with the curb. And it's already illegal to be in the right-of-way anyway. Right.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Otherwise I will have to open the public hearing.
Can we include balloons, like the large weather balloons that floated over like Blisey Farms for like a year and a half, whenever, you know, that the builders put up that are like five hundred feet in the air and super obnoxious?
It's not allowed in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so if it just drifts into the right-of-way at any point in time, can we take it down?
I, you know, I guess, you know, outside of this item, I mean, I guess, and some other question for the commission is, is there... for the commission is, is there anything that you'd like us to look at, uh, the code in general, but in this case, signs specifically? Um, signs are the hardest thing to regulate.
I can argue that the balloon is a sign.
It is.
A signal.
Yes.
So my understanding is.
It serves the same purpose.
It is.
Just about words on it. Sometimes there are words on it.
And it could be enforced in the code. It states that any freestanding sign or temporary sign can't be higher than eight feet.
Yeah. So when, say it's outside of the right-of-way, so it's in private property, is this a, trying to address any of that as well?
If it's on someone's personal property or private property and it's not in the right-of-way, no, it's.
It would fall under the general sign ordinance. You're not going to care about garage sale announcement signs.
No.
If someone tried to put up an advertising sign, different story, because it might fall under the sign ordinance.
Right.
You know, um, just to give some context, too, I think what really, what, where this really came from was, first off, there are a couple of signs along the River Road, probably other roads, that are massive, that are advertising for builders. They're, they're like billboards. The other thing is, is at the intersections, it just seems like there is this competition for how many signs can we stuff into a, you know, I mean, you know, you'll see four of the same builder on each corner. That's really the, the con, the, I don't, I don't think that, um, there's really a problem with signs on straightaways. You know, I'd, I'd really not like to get into this deal where you have a graduate student's sign is out in the right-of-way.
Directing people how to get to your house.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we clean it up, so we don't do that.
Or is there concerns if we're profiling against a certain group, we're going to get in trouble?
Well, can it, can we allow like, single-day personal events or something, like a garage sale? Like, you know, arrows pointing you into the neighborhood, or a grad party, or somebody's fiftieth birthday party or something like?
The problem I see, I would see with that is, in the newer developments, you're seeing guys run around with trailers with these signs, putting up, day after day, they're coming out and maintaining them. They have a cart full of them to add to them.
Yeah, but that's for business, though, right?
No, these are, but they're, they're doing it daily, is what I'm saying.
Advertising for a business versus a grad party.
Personal use.
Personal, personal use, single-day event signage.
I mean, I just.
Can't, I mean.
Can we distinguish somehow between these commercial advertisement signs? And private, personal, lost pets? It's hard. So you want to take down, I lost my pet sign, I mean, that's gonna, I think that puts staff in a very difficult position.
Charge him with a misdemeanor for putting a lost pet.
Well, maybe you wouldn't have to charge him a misdemeanor, you just huck in the back of the truck. But do, you know, to what, to what extent are we going to direct staff to say, well, maybe we don't need to take off the, or take the lost Labrador sign out of the ground? Let's let that sit for a week and hopefully probably gets found? I, I, I just, I fear that so much is going to be left up to interpretation. And to your point, is somebody going to feel like they've been harmed or mistreated? Is staff going to have very clear direction? Um, I think the clearest direction is all signs go, right?
Yeah, it's already illegal. We just got to choose to enforce it. We don't need to, I mean, we can codify it. It's not going to hurt anything. It's more the enforcement side of it that you're going to.
Sure. So with signage, we, we cannot, uh, regulate the message on a sign. So we can regulate the location and the size and the number, but not the message, so.
You can't regulate who's allowed to put it there, right? It from a commercial purpose?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Darn.
It gets difficult beyond that. So if you have a garage sale, you know, every weekend, is that a, now a commercial use?
I'm, I'm a little bit more worried about the grad party, lost dog.
I, I don't know. I, there's a, there's a home, home staging company down in Minnetoka, um, and they put their, they put their signs out all over the place. They're similar type signs to garage sale signs, and they put them out literal miles away, and I don't like that.
No, I don't either.
But they're, they're handwritten garage sale-looking signs, but it's a commercial business.
There's too much interpretation.
Yeah.
I, I agree. And that's where it's, the easiest thing is just, they all go.
Where I'm going with this.
It feels cold.
In the code is maybe we shouldn't call out a few uses. We shouldn't call it the uses, just say, all signs in the right-of-way are not allowed. It's a misdemeanor. Because when we call out certain uses, you know, it's easy to say, oh, garage sale guilty, real estate guilty, but then lost dog not guilty. Or we don't even call out building or, you know, broker signs. And that apparently is the big concern. We don't even call it out.
I, I think the additional context is helpful for people to understand, because if it says just any, any sign within the public right-of-way, yeah, you read that literally and it's any sign within the right-of-way. But I'm sure somebody would be like, but I can put this sign there. I can put a garage sale sign there. Everybody has garage sale signs. That doesn't apply to me, right? But now if you kind of start to call out some of those things that are maybe more habitual, it might help, like, no, that sign really can't be there either.
There, there is going to be a little bit of pushback, because some of the businesses in the city periodically, when they do their thing, they put out signs. I mean, even when the city had the parade the other week, um, they had sandwich signs out there on the right-of-way. So there is going to be, I mean, if you think about some of the popular events that go on in the city, they put signs out.
I think we're going to have to be careful, too, in election season as well. You know, I think it would probably look pretty bad if somebody running for election violates, uh, a clear ordinance, especially if it's somebody that was there when that ordinance went in. Speaking of parade, though, I think, you know, during Parade of Homes time, we, we might need to hire in some seasonal staff members to help come take these signs out. They are going to be that mad.
Cash for signs?
Well, like a dollar per sign.
And staff did talk with the Public Works Director about this. You know, if they see signs that are in the right-of-way, they can pick them up. We have the garage back here that we would put them in, can make phone calls to who the people are, whatever, hey, we have your sign. It's not allowed in the right-of-way. You can come get it, you know, give the R hours. We can also educate the public before this goes into effect, or you put it on our website, put it in our newsletter, you know, that this is.
Education will be huge on it. Is, is a citation an option at some point? Is a misdemeanor, right? So I mean, if you have a, if you have somebody, let's just, any one of the, the national builders, they've got more resources, more manpower than the city does. They could very well just follow you around. You pull a sign, they stick a sign. You pull a sign, they stick a sign. It, it, not saying that would happen, but they could put them back probably quicker than we can take them out.
Our public service officer could do that.
Not like we want to tie them up either, but for a nuisance that they keep purposefully after maybe letters from staff and whatnot, um, continue to do it, I, I, yeah, that would seem reasonable.
And I, I realize, you know, Darren mentioned, people don't realize where the public right-of-way is. Um, but in the same context, currently, I, I know we have residents in, in our neighborhood that get the Parade of Homes signs put in their front yard and they don't want them there. And so they pick them up themselves and chuck them. Um, and it's, it's a constant battle that they're already having to deal with. So this would help the people who don't want it there, um, from that standpoint. Um, I, I also know, um, that we've got still in our neighborhood, um, some larger, the larger wooden billboard ones causing sightline issues for, for drivers. And there was actually a recent accident at one of the intersections where one of those is. And so I, I think it, it's, I think it warrants, you know, adding this stuff in and enforcing it, if the city's willing to do it.
I will point out, one of the pictures that you had in there, I think, was a SWIP billboard. Uh, Jason, you can probably attest, those sometimes have to be in the right-of-way, right? I mean, we're doing a project.
Yeah.
We can't put something on a private property. It has to be in, in the right-of-way. So I know one of those pictures was.
Was that this one?
One more down, I think, or maybe up. Right there, that blue one in the right picture. I think, I don't know for sure. If not, I think that's Lennar's SWIP. Potentially, but so that.
That's D.R. Horton.
No, Lennar could probably find private property to put it on. They own plenty of private property. But, you know, the city will have a street project that requires a SWIP board.
Right.
And it has to go in the public right-of-way, because we can't put stuff on private property.
Is city-owned signage?
Obviously, right, yeah.
Different, such as.
It's not a city-owned sign. It's a contractor's sign.
Well, but, but they're, they're working on behalf of the city, so it would be considered city-owned signage. Would city-owned signage be different, and that would allow for things like, uh, the, the holiday parade?
I wouldn't.
I, I'm just, because the city owns the right-of-way, is it different?
And it's just a, a philosophical question here.
We don't own the right-of-way.
Wow.
Well, it depends on right-of-way, but, you know. Understood. I, I get where you're going.
Yeah.
Generally, and I, I don't, not a hundred percent this is the ordinance, but I'm going to bet so is that there's an exception for, for government signs, whether it's a safety-oriented or event-oriented. So maybe stop signs and traffic signs in the right-of-way, um, I'm going to guess there's also an exception for, uh, in government informational signs.
Hydrant flushing and no water in.
No, no.
Well, you guys use a term in here, and so back to the text code that we're trying to help you guys on, but you use the word advertisements. If you pull that back up here, because what you just are talking about now is not necessarily advertisements. It's more notifications.
Sure, public notifications.
But if you look at that text code.
I'm sorry.
Thirteen, I, I don't really have any issues with thirteen text code. I kind of was wondering what obsolete really meant, meaning.
And.
You know, I get it, I guess, I mean, it doesn't hurt to say it, but I'm trying to figure out what does that mean? Um, but when you read the next sentence, actually, my, our, ours is different. Mine is different.
I, staff, this was up here. It was all thirteen.
Okay.
And I realized that it should have been down one.
Got it. So fourteen, when we use the word which advertises a business, that, I get that. That makes sense.
Yeah.
And actually, the way you read fifteen makes more sense than the packet, so.
Yes.
I guess one of the questions on fifteen is, when we have code and people violate codes, is it a misdemeanor in general when you violate a code? Or why are we, why do we have to call it out? Like, why are we adding it to the code? Or is it unique that we need to add it? Or is it not unique? That's what I don't know.
It's, it's not unique. That's typically our way of enforcement on, on our code section ten point nine nine. However, we do have in our fee schedule, if there's a zoning violation, after they've been notified and that violation exists for thirty days, then we can do an administrative fine of five hundred dollars and a hundred dollars each day that they're in non-compliance.
Is that kind of how signs are?
So we do have that option.
Is that how this is intended to work with the mis, calling out the fact that it's going to be? I mean, I get it to draw an emphasis that don't do it.
Right.
Also, we're, we know people are going to do it, and then we're going to, people are going to say, well, you got a misdemeanor, but I didn't. I mean, and so that's why I don't know if it, if it's necessary to call it out. Call it out to draw emphasis, but if it's not necessary, I'd probably strike that part of it.
Okay.
If we have the ability to go there anyways, this doesn't necessarily advertise that that is the next step. I, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, especially because once, once someone gets fined, they're going to wonder, especially if they're making a big deal of it, is who else wasn't fined?
This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at seven fifty-four. We can continue our discussion if, if there is any. Any, anyone here for the sign ordinance?
No.
I will close the public hearing.
I'm trying to think what more, you know, if we, if we're going to put a list in there, I'd like it to maybe be even a little bit more inclusive, if we're going to, but I'm trying to think, what else would you put? Um, like, I don't know if you really.
I think the only other thing I got to say, it's reiterating a little bit, but I agree that the simplest way would be to say no signs. But I'm really torn on that, because I still feel like our residents should have the ability to put up graduation party signs or birthday party signs.
This is going to throw out the baby with the bat. But no one's telling them they can't. It's just saying they can't have it in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so then you have to just put them in neighbor's yards or something?
But.
You can't put it in the, in the corner saying, turn this way to go to my house.
Subdivision or your entrance of a, if you live on a long rural road.
If it's there for a day and no one says anything, it's going to be gone before anyone even notices it. It's going to be a non-issue if it's there for a day and we said we don't care about those.
It's there on a Saturday.
The ones that are there for a week, two weeks, three weeks, those are going to get noticed. Those are going to get pulled down. Those are the ones that are a nuisance. Your one-day, one-party sign, no one, the city's not going to randomly, I mean, the chance of the city happening by on that one day, which is usually a weekend, is just pretty slim to none. So the only ones that are going to get taken down are going to be the nuisance ones. And we can always change it back.
We also did advertise this and no one's here to, to speak on behalf of it.
Of the lost dogs.
Yeah.
I know, for lost dogs.
I'm, I'm, I'm with Sarah on this one, man.
Yeah. I, if we can think of more things to list to make it inclusive, I'd do it, since you've already listed a few of them. Again, I can't think.
Balloons.
Balloons. You might as well. This is about right-of-way, so. But I would strike the last sentence.
We do talk.
The suggestion.
We do talk rotating signs, shimmering signs.
You can see it from the right-of-way.
I would say balloons.
Balloons could fall, though, under the advertising signs that gets higher than eight feet.
Height limit.
There's a height limit.
But the large ones, yeah.
When you say unauthorized sign messaging, don't you just say, we can't, you can't police the messaging?
Correct.
So we think we need to clean that up.
Unless it's.
The prohibition covers all unauthorized sign messaging.
And I think if it's, there are certain.
Obviously obscene stuff, we can't.
Right.
I get that, but the, using the word, I think, didn't we cover that somewhere else? We already covered that up above.
Which?
Content classified as obscene.
He's talking about right here.
I think it's, just say all signs and get rid of the messaging.
Okay.
The prohibition covers all unauthorized signs, including but not limited to. Just make signs plural, or, I think, possessive.
And then remove the last.
Or, or do we, any sign in the right-of-way, period?
I'd be fine without having a list, to be quite honest. But I get why you're trying to draw emphasis to those items that are called out there, but I'd be fine without a list.
Just any signs within the public right-of-way, period, nothing after?
Yeah, I, I think I, I've, I've come, I've come around to that. How many residents are actually going to go find this code citation and, and that one sentence is going to stay on its own?
And then they're going to say, well, Sarah didn't get a fine when she had a garage sale, and Darren didn't get a fine when, you know, he did this, and.
It's a lot of red.
The second sentence is probably still fine, if you want to add a little more clarity.
Is including installing signs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The second sentence is fine. It's after that where the list is.
Well, we, we say that, though, right up in twelve.
Oh.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep. So.
Same thing.
It's the same verbiage.
Control the.
But. At least to me it is.
Yep.
Yep.
I agree.
Good. We don't have to vote on this, right? It's just comments.
Well, actions do.
Do we have to vote on this?
We have to vote on this.
All right.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment with the changes that we suggested here today to city council.
Are you going to un, are you going to strike that se, yeah, you are, never mind.
Yeah.
My brain went circles.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, to the text amendment as shown on the screen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
That's it for public hearings, right?
Yes.
And so new business?
Nope.
No new business? And, uh, and then we had.
So.
Discussion on the, just discussion on the. Discussion on the, just discussion on the master plan.
So item nine A is discussion on Dayton Parkway Master Plan Open House, which was held, was it Wednesday, this past Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at the city center, so, um, the open house was facilitated by our plan consultant, Landforms, and they had typed up kind of a general perspective from, from their point of view, that was distributed in commissioners before the meeting, generally speaking, and just to summarize this, we had around eighty people that were attended, so, I'll back up a little bit, so the, the master plan area is about one square mile, so this is within, you know, generally speaking, where, uh, within the comprehensive plan, or the twenty, forty comprehensive plan, we're planning a town center, and town center, I'm going to define as kind of a, I'm gonna call it a new downtown, so kind of a, a commercial area, a higher density residential, and higher as in more than single family, um, and then what else should be there, so, once again, the area that's being studied is one square mile, um, there were mailings that were given to property owners within that area, I believe there were twenty-three property owners, so the fact that we had eighty people attend was a pretty good turnout. Uh, there was an online survey, or pre- visual preference survey of what did people want to see, um, the results of that survey is on the city's website, so, you know, for example of, you know, what are, uh, what different amenities were the most desirable, and generally speaking, it was trails, whether it be paved or an unpaved, um, and parts and open space, as far as the architecture goes, uh, there was, I think, a question of, you know, traditional versus contemporary versus modern architecture, and I wanna say modern architecture was more of the preference.
Yeah.
And so, staff's intent and, and Landforms' intent is to bring this back to the commission at the January meeting for a bigger discussion, you know, we have some residents that are in the audience that would also like to, uh, provide their opinions too.
Alright, um, if anyone would like to come forward and speak, speak on this, please state your name and address, and.
I'm Scott Shitty, uh, lived at one one nine eight oh East Fair Creek Road, uh, since nineteen ninety-two, built home mostly myself, it's a quality home, uh, and well maintained, um, I respect all the effort that you guys put in, and the time you volunteer, uh, but I'm not happy, uh, I got to the, uh, open house last Wednesday and found out that there is Dayton Parkway now goes through my living room, uh, I have been told in this chamber over the years, when Dayton Parkway was still just a thought, uh, coming off ninety-four, and as recently as last Wednesday, that the city would never take property from anyone, if anyone would, was unwilling to sell, then they would not be forced to offer their property. I can tell you, I have no interest in selling, and I'm, um, unclear as to why the road moved, it used to go just south of my property, uh, it has now moved three hundred and fifty feet north, uh, some of the reasons given at the meeting were something about a slightly less, um, sharp curve in the road, which seems pretty, um, that's what it was. And, do you have the new one? Uh. There is where it is now, and mine is in the south of those three, um, uh, residential lots, in the middle of what you guys would probably like to be a clean slate, um, so I would respectfully ask you to reconsider the alignment to Dayton Parkway and that area, I, if your purpose was to flatten the curves, it would make more sense to flatten them even further, and go north of our properties, and just swoop it up and go up to, uh, Zanzibar, uh, in the one hundred and twenty-fifth, where it already meets, or keep it the way it was, um, I'm no expert, but I do think that it would be, if, 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 I don't know if an eminent domain case would go, because there's obviously other places that the road can go, this isn't a widening of an existing road, it's not, um, it's not difficult to miss my property, is my point.
Scott, could, could you point out which is your property?
Right here.
Okay.
See, I always shake a lot. And, again, I'm not trying to be critical, but I do have to say that at the open house, when the survey was, um, the results of the survey were, um, discussed, there was two hundred and eighty-five respondents to the survey, it was an online survey, uh, I didn't know anything about it, and I was the first one to ask, you know, do you have any idea how many peo- how many people responded to the survey that were landowners, they didn't, and I said, did anybody here reply, and about ten or twelve hands went up, so I don't feel like the survey is representative of the landowners, if that's what you're going for. So I know it's late in the game for changing this, is this already going?
This is very early in the game, very, very early.
Well, I understand it's early in the game as far as grading the road, but is it early in the game as far as getting the line moved?
Yeah, so the general intent is, you know, we, we have, I'm gonna say point A and point B, so point A of where Dayton Parkway goes in it, or tees into one hundred and seventeen, and point B of, um, Zanzibar, and was that one hundred and twenty?
One hundred and twenty-fifth.
So the question is, is how do you connect those two, and it, it could go anywhere, um, you know, whether it's a straight line or a curved line, that is what needs to be decided.
Can, can we back up to the, just, to the old one, just for a minute? And, and Scott, you've been around for a long time, and you may, we don't have the X up here before, but this is kind of an outcome of the X, this, this one here, and these, these lines are, I'm gonna call them fat Sharpie lines.
I understand.
We're looking for a route, not a, uh, not a design at this point, and so, if you recall when we had the X, um, there was another property over on, on Fernbrook side, that we, and Darren and Paul, Paul and myself, were up here for many months trying to figure out, okay, can this property develop, because, do we put the, do we go with the X or not, and do we, do we allow land to be saved for future right of way or not? That was all part of the conversation, and that, just drawing some pictures of where we are at with this fat line on your side, it's just a fat line denoting point A to point B, and that's kinda what it is, at this point, it's.
Just to give you a little history too, Scott, is why this is all happening, is the original Dayton Parkway was supposed to intersect here.
Right, that's why all the slant of the lines.
And now it's even more difficult to get it to Zanzibar, and so, I'm not a fan of that, because I want traffic to flow in the long term, over the next twenty, thirty, forty years, but I'm not saying that that's not the answer, or the answer that was presented is the answer, because it is early in the game to figure out that answer yet, so there's plenty of opportunity at this point.
And that, that's kinda what I was getting at, too, is, that, that other property that was developing, because we had shown the line, had to help, we had to work through the process of, do we do anything or not?
And I like your idea of considering shifting it further north, too, and I will say this, 'cause I, I work in the, on these projects constantly, uh, in my profession, is, there's a chance that we could shift it north now, and in ten years.
I understand.
Comes back to where it is, or maybe goes even, I mean, it could change again, but it's so important that we get a good idea, because at some point in time, um, stuff is gonna start developing, and we wanna make sure we understand road connections.
My biggest concern is that I didn't want this not to be voiced, because if in five or ten years or fifteen years, it does go through my living room, and the attitude might be, well, why did you say something, the line was there for fifteen years, and so I just wanna be unwrapping of saying, I really wanna stay in that property.
It's good to know, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, Scott, if you could fill out one of those forms, and, if we, we have the.
I assume when, it depends on starting a paper, I mean, there is a lot of farmland in this area that's not housing, right, so I mean, at some point that has to be considered.
Would anyone else like to come forward on this? Yeah, master plan.
I'm not sure if this, the letter you guys part of master plan or not.
Come on forward, we'll hear ya, and help you decipher.
John Grindlin with Twin Cities Transport and Recovery, you are at seventeen four oh one, one hundred and thirteenth, uh, Avenue North, so, just add the letter, just saying that, um, there's a building and a road running between, so a building at seventeen four hundred, and then a new city road running between seventeen four twenty and seventeen four hundred, and we're seventeen four one.
Oh.
That was actually for a concept plan that got pulled from the agenda and is going in January.
Okay.
We're waiting for revised plans.
Perfect.
Do you have anything you wanna share on it?
I'm just curious what, what it would do, you know, just the impact it would have, that's probably the main thing, so, we can keep an ear out, or come back in January?
Yeah, well, yeah, so we'll touch base with you, so.
Will they get a new notice?
We can.
Of the change in date and time?
We, we should do that.
Yeah, we should make a note to do that.
Sadie not showing up here today.
Oh, it's all good, so.
Riveting meeting to listen to.
Thanks for your patience.
Life-changing, so, thank you.
Just add something to that, uh, just, FYI, there will be a, a meeting of property owners along one hundred and thirteenth to discuss some improvements, uh, on the roadway, that will also include discussions on the roadway you're looking at, so.
That's in the January agenda?
It, not on a current agenda, so it'll be a, an informational meeting that's held for the property owners, has not yet been scheduled, I anticipate it'll be in January or February, so.
We'll keep a closer eye on line two, then it'll be close on line.
Yep.
Yep.
And I know you had mentioned it before we met a couple months ago.
Yep.
Got more of a radar on us.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, um. I think, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think, if any of us have any feedback we wanna give staff on the meeting too, I, you know, the one thing I'll just say is that, John, you just did a really good job of explaining the A to B concept, I think that driving that home at the beginning of the meeting may have been useful, because what was put on the original map is by far the path of least resistance, and we all knew that there might be some issues, and Scott, just so you're aware, I was okay with having issues, because I wanna hear people come forward of their concerns, so we know how we gotta react, but we don't know who wants to sell, who wants to do this, so we kinda took a path of least resistance right now, and we don't even know when it's gonna happen, much less, all that kinda stuff, but that was a driving factor, and I think, you know, in the meeting, um, I would hope that in going forward when we have those meetings, I would suggest having some city staff up there, and, uh, basically taking ownership for the third-party consultants, like, you agree or provide more information, 'cause he was stuck in a rock in a hard space when he got hit hard on eminent domain, because that's not even his call, that's not even staff's call, it's only, it's who's on council at the time, whether they were gonna do that or not, and no one can predict that. Um, so having some staff up there to bail out the consultants, like, he's presenting his stuff, and then there's all these other questions that are kind of unrelated to what he presented, would be useful.
Can I add something to it?
Sure, if, Scott, if you could come, speak into the microphone, please.
Just, to, to agree with what you said, he shouldn't be up there representing the city, saying no one will ever be able to, no one will ever be forced to sell, I don't think that was his place to say, that's my opinion.
Darren, when you were talking about the original map, were you talking about the twenty fourteen map, or the original map after twenty fourteen?
I'm confused, Dennis, because we had a transportation plan that had an X that didn't agree with our land use plan, so our consultants, we just didn't do a good job with our plan last time around.
So?
And so I, I almost look at this land use plan, the land use plan, I already got rid of the X, but the transportation plan didn't, but I'm referring to this plan right there, that, that, how it, the Dayton Parkway got shifted, which is making it a little bit harder to get from point A to point B, not impossible, but harder.
Were you saying the shifting just to cool this curve off, or you talking about the original?
The original shift that went in with the cubes.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, because of that shifted, we have to shift even more, because it would have impacted way less property owners if we didn't shift in the first place, and it shifted, and, you know, there's gonna be property owners impacted when that goes through, and that's the hard thing about eminent domain, why no one should say never gonna be used, but if twenty-four of twenty-five people, the city reached agreements to buy their land for the road, not your whole property, whatever they need for the road, it'd probably be a shame for the city, especially if there was safety and all these other issues of why you need the road, that it didn't, we didn't go through with it because of one holdout, but I get why you hold out, if you, I get it, I mean, I totally get it.
I think there's gonna be impacts, no matter what, obviously, as we try to put this through there, um, and, and I like, Peter, you describing it as this is a Sharpie line, right, this is a place to start, and that, that, as far as I understand, really is about as far as it's gone, right, we are a long way away from doing this, a long way from figuring out what is the right curve, what's the speed limit gonna be on there, 'cause that dictates the curve itself, um, all of those things, but it is good to get feedback from residents, like you, like, I, I don't wanna move, if you can avoid this property, this is a property to avoid, that's good feedback for staff to have, but then also understanding the bigger picture, we are going to impact, right, uh, we need to, we need to choose the best route, and there's so many different aspects of that, but, you know, I, I think engaging the public is one of the first steps, and, um, sounds like we did that with you, so, at, at that, from that standpoint, that's a good thing, we, we have heard from the property, a impacted property owner, how they feel about it, and then I think that helps feed future discussions.
I have a quick question, as a novice to all of this and very new, why the effort is going into this location, obviously, there's a road consideration, but we have some other areas in Dayton that are, like, could, like Rain Tree Plaza, the existing downtown, in quotes, why those aren't being actively pursued, instead of starting something brand new, to my knowledge, no one in this one square mile wants to do this, they're not necessarily actively opposed, but I don't know anyone who's like, yes, this is.
There are a few, there are a few people that wanna, not so much they wanna see it develop, they just are ready to sell and move on to the next chapter.
And they would just have to make as much money as possible, and if it's developed, it will make more, I get that, but, um, it's not all farmland, in fact, those four little skinny pieces are all horse properties, I've boarded at two of them, um, and know the other ones, and there's houses, they're long skinny properties, you got a house smack in the middle of all of them, um, so you're gonna, someone somewhere's gonna be real pissy about their house getting taken down, just that part of it, um, but also, talking about wanting traffic to go faster, I don't wanna be a pass-through, right, like, I don't necessarily want to make traffic speed through Dayton from the highway to the other side of the river as fast as humanly possible, that's not, I don't really care about the people who are going through Dayton, like, the people in Dayton to have as convenient as possible, so just, these are questions I have as someone who wasn't here for the first round of all of this, that landed us in our current position.
I will say that the reason, and everyone up here has a probably different opinion, Sarah, so let them speak up or ask, but, the reason I want it to be a fifty-five mile an hour road is for the residents of North Dayton, no one else, Brockton Lane is gonna, it's already getting to be a nightmare, it's only gonna get worse, Fernbrook is not a true north-south road, because once, it's already bad for the people that live on Fernbrook, but once you turn and go through up Pine View, it's even worse, if, if that's how our north-south road is, and Dayton River Road is gonna only get to be a bigger disaster, so this road isn't, like, supposed to be, like, fast tomorrow, but imagine in twenty years from now, when North Dayton and areas start getting more developed, this is gonna be a major road through a city, 'cause it, the city's gonna look so different in twenty, thirty years, and so really getting the alignment is the most important thing, and the examples you gave about Rain Tree Plaza or Old Village, those areas are already open for development, technically, so there's nothing we can do as a city, 'cause we don't play developer, someone has to come forward and redevelop it, if that's what they wanna do.
But my point is, no one is, so I.
But we don't play developer.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of people that would develop this all day long, if you put a road in, not saying that that's what's gonna happen, but there's housing builders that would, I mean, it's a slow market, so they're not gonna go fast, but through, two years ago, Dennis, if that was open, there probably would have been tons of property sold and home. sold and home builders, if it was open for development. But there's no road, it can't be open for development because we don't...we can't handle traffic.
I think the other piece that I don't agree with all of your comments, Darren, just to validate your first point. But I think that one thing you missed, too, as part of why we're looking at this, the comprehensive plan amendment would is coming, and we're talking about potentially changing land uses in this area. And so that's kind of the big impetus of why I look here. We're not changing land use in Rain Tree Plaza or down to...or Historic Village, but we are considering land use changes around what would be a future roadway network. And so that's...and that's part of the comprehensive plan that we have to do.
That's required of us, right? It's required of us.
When you look at that map, you see the red, that's what Peter's referring to, is the red is probably gonna shift...well, number one, the road shifted.
Yeah, so...
So the red's gonna shift.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you think of, well, we've got...where is the red going to go? So we've got kind of a revised plan that shifts the...I'm gonna call it the commercial area to the north, and putting in a parkland up against the lake. You know, yeah, so things that we need to decide, probably, you know, I'm gonna say sooner rather than later, but that doesn't mean right now, is where is this S curve going to go? Is it going to be farther north or where it is now? And what's going to drive that? So if this doesn't get built out for, you know, an unknown period of time, whether that's five years or 30 years, you know, it's a question for the landlords, are they going to be here in five or 30 years?
And the bottom third, bottom half, is actually in 2020 staging as well, is that correct? Or 2030? Which one is it? I think it's 2020.
Couldn't say for sure.
Yeah, I think the bottom third is 2020, and then I...but so point being is that if...granted, it takes someone willing to sell their land, and no one's pushing them to do that. But if someone wanted to sell their land and the developer came in here, the other thing is we get blamed as the holdup, like we do on some other parcels, if we don't have our plans figured out. So if we have our plans figured out, then we can maybe also figure out how we're gonna pay for it. Because ultimately, the combination of property owners that own property are gonna somehow contribute either with the price that their land gets bought for, or the developers pay for it, but the average resident isn't...we don't really want them to pay for development.
And for the record, I live in North Dayton, so I would be the one using this road, and I don't need to go that fast. I can go slower.
One of the properties, just FYI, that is designated as parking, John, is now for sale, so...
Yes.
I have calls on it.
Okay. The other thing, Sarah, about establishing a good corridor is if we want to attract commercial uses actually here, it needs to be a good corridor that people use. And so the idea of making Dayton Parkway the main thoroughfare is that people won't want to use Fernbrook as often. So where if they're all equal, and you have a mix of traffic everywhere, we created...in my mind, we're creating problems on more roads instead of trying to shift some of that traffic to a road that is more designed to get people Point A to Point B, from the freeway to their homes in North Dayton.
I've got a question for Scott. If, assuming this is, you know, wherever the road gets aligned, so you know, let's say if this gets built out or construction starts where it's townhomes and maybe some low-rise apartment buildings, would you still stay here?
What it's gonna look like in 20 or 30 years, but the older I get, the more adamant I would say yes. I don't...the older you get, the less money means. And where are you gonna go? And we picked this spot because of the location. I mean, it is ideal, you're close to everything, and I'm sitting in the middle of a farm field right now. And even if it's something else around me, I don't know that he can beat the location.
I mean, that's one of the big draws of Dayton, is location.
Right.
Proximated in the interstate. And then goes, Sarah, your question, why here? Well, the interchange is here, right? So now we gotta connect our big node, the interstate, to another location, you know, and plan for that. And that's really what this is, is planning for it and figuring out, well, what does that look like if we were to do it? When we do it, what does it look like? And yeah, is it 55 miles an hour? Is it 30 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour? Those are all future questions.
Although I do think that that question plays into the layout.
Absolutely.
Like, if people are content at 40, then you can have more curves and...but I have a feeling more people will use Fernbrook if this is 40. That's my feeling. That's what we don't want long-term.
And this is future county road, correct?
Hopefully.
Right. So that, you know, they will very likely have some input on it as well. And you look at a lot of other county roads, other Hennepin County roads, those specifically going through Maple Grove that have developed around it, not a lot of them that are still 55, especially after they reconstruct it. Those speed limits get pulled down, but that's just my take on that.
Yeah. I think like when I drive through Woodbury on Radio Drive and Woodbury Drive, those are 55. You drive, well, into St. Michael, that's 55, right?
It's also a truck highway to 421.
Right. Well, this is gonna be...well, that's part of the other discussion is, we never really got there yet because we're focused on the roads, but one of the options is to consider potentially more industrial uses, too. We never really got there. And you know, I will say this to staff, is that I get we're in a rock and a hard place of trying to figure out land use colors because of meeting the Met Council's density requirements, but it's not helping us try to present the plan by showing all this medium and high density when we kind of all...I think we kind of all agree that we're overstating it because we're using too low a density numbers. But it's not helping any presentation. Like, when people...I was standing around talking to people, they're like, what is it, 400 acres of...600 acres of townhomes and apartments? I can't think of one place in the metro that has that. So it just doesn't...it's not helping our argument or trying to present a good concept. So it's almost like if we could ignore the Met Council, because we're not implementing this, we're coming up with the plan until we do our comp plan, is if we could somehow ignore the density requirements a little bit, knowing that we gotta make sure we didn't get them right when we do the comp plan.
Yeah, in trying to think of, you know, and I'm gonna take more of an economic look at it. So what is the community desire to have here for commercial development? So let's say it's a grocery store, you know, and is it an Aldi's or a Cup? And what is the...what is the customer demand that they would need to have two grocery stores in Dayton?
Dayton, I mean, obviously, you're talking a question of time. Like, a lot of people at the meeting, too, I don't think we...as a city, we don't communicate very well on the timing of this. Some people are talking about when it's built out. Well, that's a long time when all those land uses are built out. That's 25, 30-plus years. When the road comes through is a different story, I think, because it's...if you're gonna have...if development's gonna occur in Dayton, you can't do it without roads. And so to answer your question about how much of everything, that's why you set aside the land, enough of it, because Dayton could handle two or three, probably three grocery stores when it's all built out. But that's a long time away.
Sure. Let's just start with a quick trip over here.
That's...I think I shared that map at the meeting, but that's why when you look at commercial nodes and their spacing, that's kind of why I'm an advocate of moving this further north than 117th, because there's no houses south of 117th. It's all industrial. If you move it north a mile or two, it's not that big a deal. In fact, you're making it more of a draw area for North Dayton to drive to it.
More convenient for North Dayton, the North Dayton residents are less likely to go to Rogers.
Our Champlin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jason, any idea what ultimate build-out, what kind of ADT this route would carry? Just round, complete round number? 10,000? 20,000?
Without. Without.
Well, yeah, at bridge, yeah, then it becomes more like the road you're looking for, I think.
No, I don't want...I'm not necessarily an advocate of...I'm actually not an advocate of a bridge crossing. I'm not against it if it happens, but I'm not like, we need a bridge.
Without, what do you think?
I think they were running the 2040s at like 17 to 20. I'm guessing it'll get higher than that, so I think maybe 25 to 30 ultimate without a bridge.
It's carrying a lot of cars.
Yeah, 25,000 cars a day without a bridge.
It's higher than what they're estimating, but they were projecting...
They're estimating, though, was going on our population projections, which we've already met the 2040 almost, if we haven't. We probably have this year already.
Yeah.
Meaning that we didn't have very...our 2040 projections were...I don't know, that's why I didn't understand their map when they presented it. I think they presented one fully built out, though, too, didn't they?
I think they did. They called it the 2040. It's labeled as the 2040, but I think it was upon full build-out.
Oh.
But I would still think with regional growth behind that, it will ultimately be even higher than what they're saying. Although maybe, now that I'm thinking about it, maybe it did taper off as you go north. It was the X at the time, so I think they were probably closer to 20 up to the, I'll call it the crossing, and then something less than that. But nonetheless, I mean, I'm sure you're talking warranty additional lanes. I'm sure it's over 15,000 for sure.
Any other discussion on this, or? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion, meeting is adjourned.